You meet some good matches guys. They have 2 interesting teams, 2 very non-meta teams, which is very interesting. And we get to see how they use their teams. Uh, so we have on the left Nancy Setapd, Genenba, Android17, and Zamasu. And then on the right, we have Bardock, I think Bardock, Zamasu, and Nappa. Let's see how this is going. Alright, we get a fake cross-up, a fake cross-up super dash from Zero, solid stuff. Gonna put Nancy in the corner with this combo, get some damage in, but 1.5 bars, alright. Tried to mix, maybe messed up the timing. Oh, good block from Nancy, did it a 6M. Alright, keep pressure going, solid, solid stuff. Oh, alright, vanish, corner. And I do think Nancy was plus on that. Oh my god, optimal combos with Genenba, Jesus. Yo, Nancy been practicing here, Genenba. Alright, vanish out. Alright, X, Zero was gonna do something to get a corner, so he just vanished out. Some scrambles going on, ooh, good reflect, but did not check, that might have been a reflect big. Alright, SKD setup, I don't think that's a true setup yet, he can just hover over that, super dash. Caught Nancy pressing buttons. Alright. Ooh, raw tag, good raw tag. Damn, good patience on Nancy's part. Oh, reflects, okay. Did it, Nancy not punishing fast enough. Zero, uh, oh my god, so much scramble happening. Alright. Alright, solid, ooh, that was a good challenge from Nancy, noticed that Zero, uh, did the dragon rush. And reacted fast enough to punish, and that is a dead Bardock, with 1, right? Yeah, and we got, we got Android17 staring at Bardock in the background. Alright, let's see how Zero's Zamasu does. He does have, uh, 2 bars with, uh, Nappusis, I actually don't know how good Nappusis is, it looks like it's working pretty well. What's gonna happen, snap? Nice. Alright. Playing a little bit neutral, caught Zamasu with the Genenba key blast, level 1, uh, just level 1 to the corner, alright. Vanish out, damn, teleport out, alright. Okay, a lot of vanishing happening, oh, no confirm right there, alright. Zero, Zero needs to play this a little bit more patiently, oh, nice, oh, no punish. Maybe because of the 6 frame delay, it's okay. Alright. Okay, both players respecting each other, back to neutral, Nancy sit at PD, is sitting on 6 bars, did not get the conversion there. Oh, good overhead punish, loses to Zero. Alright, full combo, fighting knockdown, ooh, tried to go for pressure, I think, uh, X0 overcommitted there a little bit. Nancy was patient enough to double jump and punish. Damn, solid combos from Nancy sit at PD, Jesus, level 1. And then level 1. Oh, just level 3, just for oki, okay. Alright, what will the mix be? Oh, okay, just vanish out. Zero back to getting corner pressure, oh, vanished out again, sparking did not feel safe there. It's like that might have been not the best sparking there, but I think Zero, Zero sells a chance, 3 bars, almost 4 bars, and sparking with Zamasu. It's still very possible, first character down, that is very important. Zero got 1 character down, so that's, that, that might possibly be the momentum shift. Alright, yeah, Zero's gonna have to play this very carefully, oh dang. Super dash, Nancy got caught with the super dash, but no punish from Zero, ooh, vanish, very dangerous, alright, guard cancelled out. And Nancy is, even though, Nancy does still have 2 bars, or sorry, 2 bars, 2 characters, sparking and 3 bars, so this is gonna be a very, very harsh match. Oh, no conversion from Zero, alright, okay, okay. Zero's just gonna have to block this, okay, just reflect out. A lot, oh, wow, that was a really, really good vanish. That was a very risky but good vanish. Alright, now it's just a Zamasu versus, oh, okay, that should be a dead. Yep, and that's 1 on the board for Nancy sit at PD. I'm gonna go ahead, nuke 4 on the left. Alright, how's that? Okay, back to the match. Alright, ooh, just, just Bardock, 5L. Alright, this is looking just like last match, hopefully Zero can, can, uh, keep his momentum going. Damn, amazing, that was kind of a crazy challenge by Nancy, just throwing it out there. Okay, staggers, alright, good assist, nice, solid, solid nuke. And that should be a dead Genenba actually, yeah, he should build a meter, oh! Wanted to kill Genenba without meter maybe, or maybe it was a mess up, okay, block, punish, snap. Yep, here we go. What's gonna be the mix, nat mix? Oh, that was actually really out of luck. Okay, now this time Zero has a huge advan- is, has momentum this game. He has killed 1 character and Nancy's gonna have to do something about it, and there's an advertisement going on in the background. Nancy playing very patiently, what is Android, what is Nancy gonna do Android17? Gets hit, just gonna kill Nancy, or just gonna do some damage, go for knockdown? Or, actually, I don't think he can get SKD, just go for mix. Oh, just caught Nancy pressing buttons, and that is a dead Android17. Damn, Zero looking very strong right now. Alright, now it's up to this Nancy's Zamasu, 3 bars and sparking. And I, oh, I was gonna say Zero hasn't got, or Zero hasn't got hit at all this entire game, but Nancy got a hit. He's gonna go for, uh, uh, oki, oh, actually, just for damage. Oh no, messed up the snap, good block, tried to punish his Nappa, tried to punish the raw tag. Oh wow, nice, that was very good. Alright, what's gonna happen here, just full damage, gonna get the SKD I'm assuming, no, just going for mix, oh, good patience. Guard cancelled, that's a huge punish for Nancy. Going for the same combo, full damage, level 3 or no? Yeah. Nancy using level 3, wants to kill Bardock. Staggers, ooh, wow, good 2H from Zero. I would level 2, oh, no, just snap, oh, get corner pressure, actually, I respect that. Is Zero gonna force out the sparking here, that is my question, no. Okay, good super dash. Yeah, just getting full extended the combo, SKD, now Nancy's gonna, oh wow, that was, I think Zero might have missed time, his, uh, his, uh, mix there, a little bit, that's okay. Zero sells sparking, 2 characters and 2 bars, so that's pretty huge, oh, just 5H, oh my god, level 3? Yeah, level 3 for oki. Now will Zero sparking here, that is a question, I think he should, oh my god. That's so scary, good guard cancel, get corner pressure. Now this is gonna be scary, oh, just vanish out, now, Zero is in the corner, not anymore, both back to mid screen, oh, try to go for some fancy stuff. Messed it up a little bit I'm assuming, or Nancy with the wear, level 3 again, kill the sparking time, get some damage in there, now go for oki, what will the oki be? Oh my god! That was disgusting! Alright, okay, I think that should be dead, yeah, that's for sure dead. Alright, solid stuff from Zero, unless he drops it, don't drop it Zero, just level 3, keep it simple. Alright, now it's 1-1, 1-1, yes. I think we got a good match, we got a good match going on. That was pretty dirty. Just, uh, did the TikTok thing. What, what is playing? This is not an ad, oh my god, I'm sorry, this is not what I wanted to play, I was so confused. Sorry guys, I am messing up on this music stuff right now, there's like a bunch of random videos. The heck, remove? Remove from playlist, alright, that was so weird. Alright, back, no wonder people started leaving, cuz there's a random video in the background. Okay, back to the match, sorry about that, alright, looks like Nancy yads, yads, oh, okay. Yeah, that, I, I think for sure Nancy's best character, from what I've seen so far, Nancy's best character is Genenba. Her Genenba is actually kinda ridiculous. She got those, yeah, she got, Jesus Christ, she got them optimal combos. Jesus Christ. Alright, level 3 or nah, 1-3? Yep. Let's see what the mix is gonna be with Nancy's Android17. Will Zero sparking here, nah, just raw tag out, ooh, that's dangerous, oh, that was a very dangerous situation. Back to neutral, a lot of respect going on, super dash, no punish, alright. It's just like Zero won that neutral exchange, and now gets pressure, might have messed up on that, or trying to catch, oh, nice, good mix. With the 6M. Is he gonna level 3? Is he gonna go for mix? Yeah, he's gonna level 3, okay. Alright. Oh, Nancy, with the 6M, right back at ya. Oh, had to block that overhead, no conversion though, oh my god, just 5Ls and it, it just beats. 5L again, alright, keeping it simple, just getting simple extensions, alright, going up. I would say just 1-1, 1-1-1. Yeah, there you go, keep it simple, is, is it just 1-1? Yeah, wow, so much damage. Alright, looks like Zero, uh, getting the first kill in this match. Now what will Nancy do? Nancy calls out assists, is playing neutral a little bit, she is playing neutral back, try to go for the auto combo, may catch him in the air. Looks like Zero won that neutral exchange, ooh, vanish out, alright. Alright, Zero just, just keeping that constant pressure on him. Ooh, overhead, alright, it looks like that is gonna be a dead Genenba unless Zero drops this combo, just 1-1, keep it simple. Yep, getting Bardock out. Now we are back in this situation, Nancy has sparking, 5 bars, and solo's a monster, which is really hard as anchor, but... If anyone could do this, Nancy, Nancy probably. Alright, Zero just, just, he's aware that he doesn't really need to do anything, just backing off, playing neutral. Uh, Nancy tried to catch him with the super dash, and now, now, Zero is, uh, he won that, he won that neutral exchange, keeping... Okay, the vanish out, oh! Damn, Zero just keeping that, that pressure on, or forcing Nancy to spark, Nancy sparked out and is still trying... Nancy just unable to win these scrambles right now. Yeah, Zero just keeping that pressure on, tried the 2H, okay, that was a good punish on Nancy, but did not convert. Oh my god. Yeah, Zero just backing off again, calling assists, catching Nancy, just pressing buttons. And that for sure is gonna be a level 3, just to kill the sparking, there's no way that Zero will not level 3 here. Yeah, Zero, level 3 with Zamasu. Now what's the mix, and what will Nancy do? Nancy's running on 7 bars right now and sparking, just vanish out, alright. Zero just, just keeping that pressure on her once again, ooh, went low this time, and is that gonna be, I think that's dead, if he built, yeah, that's dead. Built that second bar, and that is a dead Zamasu now. Zero just won 2 games straight. So is Nancy gonna go for a team switch? Or is she gonna rematch again? And they went straight for the rematch, alright, so it's 1-2, Nancy with 1 game, Zero with 2 games, here, what is round start? Alright, we got, uh, M, M Rebellion Spear, from Zero, they're both kinda respecting each other, oh my god. Nancy is getting caught with that, uh, Nappusis, amazing, oh, Nancy just pressing buttons I think. Alright, alright, Nancy trying to get, some, trying to win a scramble, I think Nancy is getting a little too, uh, 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 what's the word? Nancy's getting a little too aggressive, like Nancy is getting, is kinda panicking and trying to win the every scramble situation, but what I think Nancy should do, they should just play, is just play a little bit more patiently, back up. Yeah, looks like Nancy's just kinda throwing buns out there and Zero's aware, and just, just, just punishing her for it, oh, tried to go for a fuzzy, messed it up. Uh, Zero, Zero jumped, did not punish the vanish, alright, Nancy backing up, ooh, tried to, tried to, I, I, I'm not sure what Nancy was going there. And it looks like Zero got the solid on Genenba, and Nancy's Genenba is dead. Alright, now it's a 3v2 situation, what will Nancy do, there Android17? 0 bars, alright, damn, Zero with Rebellion Spear, just keeping that pressure going, is gonna go into the corner, will Zero level 3? Zero will level 3, Zero wants that oki, Zero wants, wants, it's, it's very important, because if he levels 3, then he gets that mix, and he just keeps his momentum going. No assist though, but will, oh my god, just went for empty jump low. That is very death, with assist, false assist. Oh, just went for SKD, going for, oh, I don't, I'm not sure about that sparking. So from what I've seen, both of these players are, are fairly high aggressive players, against each other at least. Alright, so Nancy got the hit, gonna go for the level 3, gonna get the oki. What is, what will the mix, that is a question, oh, just, just dragon rush, Zero is not taking that, just, just, uh, sparking's out. Nancy notices that Zero was throwing out the 5L and punishes Zero for that, and Zero's Bardock is dead. Now it's a monster versus a Zamasu, Zero does have sparking and 3 bars, which is very scary, that Nappusis is just, just stopping pressure, whatever Nancy's trying to do, that Nappusis is there to stop her from doing. Oh, tried to go for, uh, Vanerson dragon rush, did not work out. Zero's gonna get a full combo sent in here, I think he's gonna level 3. Oh no, oh gee, I think that's escapable still, okay, Nancy just respecting, oh man, that is harsh. And Nancy, Nancy, Zero just winning 3 straight. What will Nancy do in this situation? Is she gonna rematch again? What will she do, is she gonna switch her team, what's gonna, what's gonna happen? She's thinking about it, looks like she went for the rematch, alright. Here we go, Nancy's taking some time to think about what happened there, you know, oh my god, that was fucked up. Just, uh, I think that was a fake cross-up, it was like, on the other side and went back to the front, that was, that was fucked up. Alright. Damn, Zero just finding the hit, every time, Nancy is, uh, Nancy is starting to, is starting to respect a little too, Nancy needs to find a way getting out of the situation. Got the hit, should get the SKD here, no mix though, because Genenba does have to dash up, calls the Zamasus to keep him down. Damn, great conversion, great conversion, keep that up, I think Nancy should 1-3 right here. Oh, drops the combo, that is very unfortunate, was not patient enough. Now Nancy's gonna have to block, Nancy hit with the overhead, and that just might be a dead Genenba. Is it a dead Genenba, yes it is, just one more, gets a Zamasu out there. Alright, Zero's looking very strong right now, and Nancy won our tournament last time, maybe I don't, and, and so we all know who Nancy is, you guys don't know who Zero is. Zero is a player who, uh, who, so for such a sudden, we hold offline tournaments, and he, he comes to, he's been to almost every single one of our offline tournaments, he's a very good, solid player. Like, you're setting up as a monster setup, oh my god, yeah, that's just hard to block, what do you, what do you do, you just gotta block, gotta, gotta guess? And that is not a dead Android17. Nancy sparking out, what is Nancy gonna do, gets caught by the Bardocuses. Zero's gonna convert, this will not be a dead 17, but Nancy has to do something to get out of this situation. Damn, yeah, Zero just, just, uh, using the level 1 just to kill the sparking time, alright. Nancy is getting pressure right now, alright, solid mix-up, good start for Nancy. I think Nancy should 1-3, just 1-3, calls a monster, oh, just level 3? It looks like Nancy wants to keep Android17 in, what will the mix be, alright, just keeping it true, dragon rush, now that should be a dead Zamasu right now, right? Just 1-3? I'm not sure actually, Zamasu's level 3 does do lower damage than usual. Alright, so it does kill, alright, this is, this is very important for Nancy, Nancy is now, this might be momentum switch, Nancy hasn't killed any of Zero's characters in a little bit. Alright, Zero noticing that, that, uh, Zamasu, or Nancy was trying to play neutral. Snaps in Android17, tries the 2H, notices that, uh, Nancy notices that Zero was 2Hing just a little bit, punished him for it. Back to neutral, or, vanished, oh, those were good reflects, but looks like Nancy just couldn't get the punish. Alright, now we're back in this situation, a little different this time, uh, Nancy doesn't have sparking, but still is a Zamasu, and Zero has sparking, Nappa, and Bardock. Let's see what Nancy will do, will Nancy be able to get another character dead, it looks like Zero is patient enough to land the hit. Caught Nancy with the overhead, alright, there's gonna be some big damage, is Zero gonna build 3 bars? Nope. Oh, what, I think Zero is blocking, oh no, he isn't, he pressed the button, that's huge, alright, is he gonna sparking? Yes he is, oh no. And that should just be level 1. Zero looking very dominant right now. Zero is up 3 games, 4-1 right now, 1-4. Nancy's, uh, taking a break right now, thinking about it again, returning to ring room. Will Nancy be switching teams, what is Nancy gonna do? What is Nancy doing, damn, Zero, Zero already ready, he's ready to fight, he's like, he's like, yeah, yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready, it looks like Nancy is switching to GT Goku, took out Android17. Android17 is just not doing the work, will the GT Goku assist help out? GT Goku assist, we all know GT, I mean, not GT Goku, but GT Goku in general, we all know who GT Goku is, he is the character to play right now. Absolutely crazy, crazy utility. Amazing damage, amazing assist. Looks like Nancy tried to go for a raw 2H from Zero, caught him with Rebellion Spear, and now Zero, we're gonna go into the corner once again. What will the mix be from Zero, and what will Nancy do to get out of this corner, oh my god. His double overhead, caught Nancy, I think Nancy, it looks like Nancy is, uh, just trying to press buttons to get out, but I think Nancy should just block, just take the, just block, take, yeah, just take it. And then just wait for the, wait for the opening, oh no. And that will be a dead Genenba. Nancy, Zero just looking mighty dominant right now. What will Nancy do, Nancy needs to play a little bit more patient, calls the GT Goku, says Zero was able to dodge that super dash later on. Gonna snap in the GT Goku, does not wanna deal with that character right now, gets the hit, get hit, gets the hit with the low. And I think Zero should level 3, yep, Zero, level 3's a monster. And it actually wouldn't be a bad idea for Nancy to spark in this situation, oh no, tried to vanish out. Knew that there was a hole, but forgot the, the area that, 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 uh, that level 1 covered, oh! That is really unfortunate, because the Zamasus 2H, just, it sucks. So, Zero knew that the super dash was coming, but the Zamasus 2H just did not get it, alright. And Zero back to corner pressure, is he gonna snap, oh, messes up the snap, Nancy could have punished, tried to go for it, did not convert, there's a 5H. And what was that? Yo, thank you for the host, Boostash, yeah, I appreciate it man, how you doing? Alright, okay, good for fucking Nancy. Gets, gains momentum back, gets pressure, Zero tried to 2H, vanished out, oh, good patience on the reflect from Nancy. 2-player turny hype, yeah, 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 2-player turny hype. Oh, good 2H from Nancy, that is huge, level 3, level 3, no, snap, just snap, wants that Zamasu dead, this is important for Nancy. And what is Nancy gonna do, oh my god, this staggers, alright, this is very, this is, this is, it's getting intense, it's getting intense, very more for Nancy. Nancy still has 2 characters alive, sparking while Zero does not have sparking, damn, just catches, you can actually continue after that? I did not know that, is that dead? That's dead, oh my god, oh, did not continue, I think Nancy should sparking soon, might as well just use your sparking resources. Oh, yeah, might as well just use your sparking resources, because Zero doesn't have sparking resources anymore. Okay, but Nancy did switch out, raw tag GT Goku in, so he, uh, she could let... Zamasu heal. Alright, Zero with the raw tag, wants Bardock out against this character, yeah, I agree, Bardock is a better, a better matchup against GT Goku than Nappa. Nappa, I think struggles against GT Goku actually. Oh my god, just caught, just caught Nancy with the, with the air M, put him down, but how you doing Boostash? Uh, is that dead? Sparking might save Nancy. Possibly, 1-1, no, that is for sure dead. Alright, like, Zero was able to, to get the hit on Nancy, and kill for GT Goku, what is Nancy gonna do now? Oh, it's raw level 3, I think Zero is patient enough to block that, and that can be huge punish, it's 5H. I, that dead, yeah, that's dead, that sparking's gonna run out very soon, just keep it simple, level 1. Yeah, Zero looking massively dominant. This is the first to 6, no, first to 10, first to 10. Yeah, I think, I think, you know, the problem with Nancy right now is Nancy is playing a little, is panicking, I don't know, she's, uh, she's challenging a little too much with her buttons. I think Nancy, yeah, legit, oh god, yeah, bad, bad guess from Nancy, but Nancy just needs to, she's, she's focused on her blocks, and, and during the neutral situation, just, just be patient in neutral. And wait for Zero to make, uh, to make a, uh, a mistake, cuz that's what Zero is pretty much doing, Zero's waiting for Nancy to make a mistake, and Zero's just punishing it at this point. There you go, mistake from Zero right there, huge punish for Nancy, what is, what is Nancy gonna do? Uh, I do not agree with the EX curse, I guess she wants the damage, snap maybe, oh yeah, yeah, Nancy wants a care cut, Nancy wants a Zamasu, it looks like Zamasu is a problem for Nancy. Good 6M, look at GT Goku's just convert, alright, now we're gonna SKD I'm assuming? Oh, that was sick, oh, oh, oh my god! We got swag combos in here, now we got pressure, Zero's just reflecting, what's gonna be the mix, oh, Zero got hit with the last hit. Oh, ooh, very dangerous, both, suspect from both players, alright. Alright, now Nan- Nancy, looks like Nancy might have a death, Nancy's now getting, the pressure, is winning this round, being the pressure stream, maybe I just cursed that, looks like Zero's returning back from Nancy. What's gonna be, level 3, alright. Oh, good block from Nancy, guard cancels out, ooh, that could have been converted, it did not, what will Nancy do with her, no, good reflect, ooh! I might have cursed that. Snap, go for damage, yeah, 1-1. Yeah, Nancy, Nancy got the combos, for sure, but Nancy gotta, Nancy's gotta play, play this rotation, and he, needs to, needs to stop, stop getting in a little too much, cuz Zero will punish her for it. Yeah, Zero, Zero knows when to take his turn, he's fully aware of it, not sure what's happening there, maybe it was a misinput. Oh, tried to go for the, go for the 5L, I think Nancy was baiting that out as well, Nancy dropping her combos. Oh, whoa, I don't know what's gonna happen here. Uh-oh, that is not good, that is a huge punish for Zero. Zero gonna go for the optimal combo, I'm just gonna go for straight damage, alright. Ooh, drops the combo, alright, gets the hit, and that should be a dead Bardock, alright. So, oh my god, that almost dropped, okay, good shit Nancy, good shit. Alright, now we're back to the Zamasu versus Zamasu creation. Looks like Zero caught Nancy pressing buttons, that, that should be a dead Zamasu, just going for the full optimal combo. 1. And now we are left with Nancy and her GT Goku. Which is still very possible, GT Goku is an amazing character, maybe not the best anchor, but is, has an amazing kit overall. Throwing the beam out there, Zero is playing very patiently, dodged a beam, went in, starts pressure, and Nancy just, just gets hit by that low. Zero setting up the oki, setting up the, uh, the hellzone or whatever it's called. Nancy not feeling safe, sparking's out, wow, Zero just, just, just catching Nancy in the air. Alright. Okay, Zero does not wanna block GT Goku, not feeling it. Catches Nancy pressing buttons. Alright, here we go, pressure started, important, alright, I would go for, uh, I would go for Spirit Bomboki right here, 100% go for Spirit Bomboki. Alright, here we go, what? What side, what mix gonna be, it's gonna be other side, it's gonna be low, it's gonna be high, oh my god, that would have been so disgusting! Okay, that actually might be dead, cuz Zero does have meter, just 1-3. Punch him, yeah, punch the kid, Nappa does not wanna deal with this right now. And currently, Zero is up 5 games versus Nancy's 1. What is Nancy gonna do? They're gonna go straight to the rematch, stiffing intros. Nancy respecting the Rebellion Spear, gets hit by the 6M. We're back in the corner, Zero doesn't have any assists just yet, oh, nice! Hits, uh, hits Bardock with the Genenba auto combo. Alright, now we're back to the trick, calls an emphasis, reflects out, okay. Now, oh! Like Nancy's just not blocking these, uh, these, this mix from Zero, Zero's mix might be a little too good right now. Nick, Zero looking very scary. Zero setting up the Cyberman, I think Zero is actually blocking right here, oh, this is not looking too good. Nancy going for the wild stuff, tried to go for the wild stuff, but gets punished for it, Zero is patient enough and was aware. Alright, here we go, 0 bars on both sides. Zamasu versus GT Goku, Zero with his Nappa out, oh! Hits, uh, hits Nancy with the low, Nancy was not aware for the problem with low. Alright, fighting knockdown, sets the, sets the, the Cyberman, easy to get over that Cyberman, snap maybe, or what's gonna, what's, what's Nancy gonna do here? Nope, drops the combo, oh, that was very unfortunate, watch out Nancy, the Cybermen's right there, blocked the 6M, didn't knock, no conversion though, oh my god. Zero just trying to go for that 2H, trying to punish Nancy, okay, that was good, dragon rush, I would say level 1, level 3, just get your Zamasu out of there. Ooh, drops the combo once again, is Nancy, uh, is Nancy getting a little too nervous right now maybe? I think, uh, Nancy should, Nancy either wait, get the hit, or sparking, looks like, uh, Nancy, uh, decided to not use her spark. Alright, now GT Goku, level 5, or GT Goku, uh, extra damage, sparking, and 5 meters. Alright. Zero just going in, he just calls his assist, catching Nancy, pressing buttons. Alright, sparking, did not feel safe there. Kamiomi has, uh, catches Zero pressing buttons actually. Alright, here we go. Will this be a momentum shift for Nancy? Starts pressure, uh, Zero decides to block, not feel safe there, and it looks like Nancy was pressing buttons. He's gonna have to play this neutral very carefully. Alright, what's gonna happen here, oki, or what's gonna happen? Alright, here we go, Spirit Bomboki. Oh, maybe messed up the Spirit Bomboki, doesn't matter. It does not matter, caught Zero pressing, or messing up pressing buttons. And this should be dead, if he goes for full da, oh, actually just goes for oki, okay. Nancy opts to go for oki, she feels, she, she, she's uh, she wants to be more consistent. Does not want to do the full combo. What will the mix be? Oh, level 3, that might be punished, let him block it, yeah, block it, punish. There you go, keep it simple, here we go. We are on a 1v1 situation, Nancy's bringing about all the way. Now Zero's Bardock versus uh, GT, with Nancy's GT Goku, both having 4 bars, and now 3 bars, oh, okay. Zero's going for the wild stuff, now Nancy is punishing Zero for the wild stuff. I would go for oki right now, go for Spirit Bomboki. Get the best oki possible in the game currently. Here we go. Will Nancy finally get a game back? Oh, goes, oh my god, went for the same mix, they tried to go for earlier, Zero's just respecting. And Nancy finally puts another game on the board, now it's 2v6. 2v6. Alright, what is Zero gonna do? What is Zero gonna, oh, they went straight to rematch, okay, here we go, here we go. Oh! That was, that was a really good solid mix with Zero. Alright. Nancy's gonna have to respect this, okay, oh, the latex! Alright, it's SKD, calls the monster assist, I'm assuming, yep, calls the monster assist, keep that pressure going, nice. 6M mix, just get the SKD, keep it consistent, don't go for anything crazy, level 3? Yeah, here we go, I see you X0, yeah! Yeah, just keep it, oh, my god, that was disgusting! Nancy has the most disgusting, some of the most disgusting mix I've ever seen. Will this be a momentum shift in this set? Looks like Nancy got the first character down, Zero waiting patiently, gets the hit. Will Zero opt for level 3? No, starts uh, going for uh, the, the hellzone oki. Hey, Nancy blocked there, does not block the 6M. That should be a dead Janemba. Alright, looks like, looks like Nancy might have warmed up. Possibly. Alright. Zero's, uh, Zero's Nappa versus Nancy's Zamasu. Calls GT Goku, just could, could have converted there with super dash, but was not ready for that. A lot of respect happening on both sides, it's like Nancy has become a lot more patient than the last couple matches. Still going for the gimmicky stuff, but she's not, she's not pressing buttons as often, great reflex, wow! Has Nancy? Uh... Has Nancy adapted to Zero's play? That is the question. Has Nancy adapted to Zero's play? Will Zero, yeah, Zero will sparking here, does not feel safe there, wants to keep both characters alive, gets the hit. I think Zero should 1-3, right? Oh no, goes for Cybermen setup, surprise, I think Nancy should sparking. Nancy should sparking very soon, because Zero has spent her, do not be afraid to use her spark. Amazing blocks from Nancy. Sparks, damn, Zero still gets the hit. That might be a dead Zamasu, wants 1-3, get the full conversions, yep, 1... Just 1-1 maybe? Alright, 1-1. Now we're in this situation, Nancy still got that level 2 sparking a little bit on GT Goku, 5 bars, it's still very possible. GT Goku is a very scary character to go against. 2H? No, no 2H, good reflex, ooh. Some style from Zero, was waiting to see what Nancy's gonna do, now we got a full combo, will he build a third bar? Nope, gotta go for mix, hellzone mix, here we go. What's gonna be the mix? Oh, here we go, big punish, alright. Ghost oki or snap? That is the question, ghost oki or snap? I think he should, or not ghost oki, I'm saying ghost oki. Spirit Bomboki or snap? Oh, we're getting the Spirit Bomboki. What's the mix? No mix at all, oh my god, just 2H's Zero, that is dead. Just keep it simple, yep, level 3. And we get to see uh, uh, the, the Super Saiyan 4, best model in the game by far. Greatest looking, most, best designed uh, Super Saiyan to ever exist, but it's not canon, just saying. And now it's a 1v1 situation, Nancy, GT Goku, Zero bars, Zero. Nappa, 3 bars, almost 4 bars, gets hit but cannot convert because there's no vanish, or no, he doesn't have a bar to convert. Tries to, oh, guard cancel, alright, alright, oh my god, that was a weird exchange. Oh my god, yo, no punish from Zero, what is Nancy gonna do, Nancy? You have to be very careful, not the super dash, you're not doing it in the air, Zero's, Zero looking very solid with 2H punish, oh my god! The Cybermen just caught him, just jumped on him, alright. There you go, Zero adding another game to the scoreboard. Tries to catch Bardock with the Janemba auto combo, ooh, hit, hit the Janemba with the super dash. Thrown out the auto combo there, a lot of respect going on, back and forth, playing neutral, oh my god, that was disgusting! Bro, what the fuck? What a counter! Damn, Zero blocking the 6M, then the reflex. Caught Nancy, uh, uh, with the assist. Now Zero's gonna get corner pressure, what's the mix gonna be? Good block to Nancy, oh, did not feel safe there, guard cancelled out. Brings the Zamasu in, gets GT Goku assist, but did not uh, continue pressure. Now Zero's getting the hit. Zero adapting back towards Nancy, that is what... Sorry, audio's cutting out for a little bit, my bad on that. Zero going for a full combo, Nancy punishing Zero, I think Nancy should get the Zamasu out there. Failed to uh, get the extension there with the uh, GT Goku assist, did not block 6M. It looks like Nancy actually did stand up, maybe, it looks like Nancy accidentally upbacked on accident. Oh, tried to go for the wild stuff, did, did Zero press the button? No, he did not, that is a huge punish for Zero. Oh, no punishing Zero, alright. Like, it's like Nancy's gonna block it, but guard cancels out, huge punish for Zero once again! What is Zero gonna do, level 3, I'm assuming? 1-3 maybe? Keep it simple, oh my god, just getting, getting more pressure in there. I think Nancy should either guard cancel or sparking soon. This GT Goku is very important for Nancy, oh no, that's gonna be a dead GT Goku. 1-1, keep it simple, alright. Now Nancy's gonna have to play without the GT Goku, so in neutral it's gonna be a little bit harder. Janemba versus Zamasu, very positive, Janemba's very sticky, what, what Nancy should do is snapping that Bardock. If you get that around again, Nancy does not block the 6M. Gets hit, and it looks like Zero's gonna get a, a level 3 mix off this most likely, no, goes for the Cyberman mix. Punishes, kills the Cyberman, wants the corner, is Nancy gonna level 3, is she gonna 1-3? Opted for level 3, okay. Goes for the mix. What's gonna be the mix be? Oh, goes to front. Guard cancels out, Zero re-gains corner pressure, good block from Nancy so far, oh, does not block the 6M. But it did look like Nancy was standing there, maybe Nancy is messing up on these uh, 6M blocks. Looks like she might be uh, blocking upwards and just uh, upbacking on accident. Alright, some Zamasu neutral coming from both sides, alright, Nancy aware of the Nappa's blocking. Alright. Nancy's trying to find her way in. Very risky super dash factor. Alright. Yeah, Zero, Zero is fully aware, he pretty much does not have to do anything at all because he has a character advantage. So he just kind of waits out for Nancy to make him a kick. And now it is, it's 2, Zero is up 6 games. What will Zero do? Damn, that Nappa assist is really catching uh, Nancy, a lot, oh, caught Zero with the low. Alright, what's the mix? Oh, okay, waited it out, caught Zero reflected. Sorry for no audio guys, I'm just fixing something real quick. I apologize, I apologize. Sorry, I just gotta, I just gotta, okay, there you go. Sorry about the no audio guys, I apologize, it's like uh, Nancy gets gets the first kill of this round. The monster versus the monster, once again. Guard, Zero not feeling safe, guard cancels out, Nancy was patient enough to punish it. Oh, no tech out, alright, gets the, gets the sliding knockdown, tries to go for the dragon rush. What is happening here? Oh, good patience from Nancy. Uh, realized that Zero was trying to go, trying to go for that overhead, 2H is the overhead, and that should be dead, no meter needed. And now Nancy's looking very strong this round. All Nancy has to do, Nancy doesn't have to do anything, Nancy just has to wait, waited out, does not have to be aggressive. Because she has advantage, so she can just back up. Oh dang, caught the Zamasu pressing, caught Zero's Zamasu pressing buttons, or, oh, we're reflecting? Alright, yeah, Nancy just, just throwing some normals out there, and then Zero, what is Zero going to do here? Zero playing some neutral, Zero does have sparking, does have access to sparking, and almost has 2 bar. Oh, very scary situation, that's very 2H-able. Alright. Guard cancel, does not want to deal with the uh, the mix and the pressure there. Oh wow. Very good patience from Nancy going on right now. And I'm asking the question, but I'm gonna ask the question again, has Nancy adapted? It's level 1, oh, just goes for mix actually, okay, I respect it. Reflect, oh my god, that was scared. Alright, Zero getting the first hit, or getting, getting, finally getting the hit that he wanted. He's gonna go, is he gonna set up a thing? No, he's gonna go for a simple mix, okay, keep it very simple, Nancy just not ready for the uh, casual uh, cross-up uh, uh, 5M. Alright, Zero gets, getting hit, I think that should be dead, just uh, keep it simple. Level 3, level 3 will not kill because of sparking, I think. Oh no, will, 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 I lied, I lied, alright. Nancy finally, or finally, Nancy putting up another game on the board, now it's 3 to Zero's 8. Will Nancy be making comeback? That is the question. Zero actually backing out, what is going on? Is, is Zero, is, is Zero uh, trying to stop the uh, momentum pressure, or Zero, is Zero switching characters? Should I go pee right now? Should I go pee? Should I commentate from my bathroom? That is the question, should I, should I yell from the bathroom? What is Zero going to do right now? I think, I think, I am... I won't, no, no, I won't, because they're starting the match again. I will not be going to the bathroom, I am, I am dedicated to this first attempt. I will hold it through and through. Do not worry. And it looks like Zero is actually switching to Android 17 this time, looks like his team may not be working anymore. Switches to 17, what was uh, instead, opted for 17 instead of the monster, tries to go for the cross-up super dash. Alright, good blocks from Zero, great reflex, right, calls the 17, 17 assist. Alright, Zero winning the uh, the scramble right there, starts pressure. Alright, backs up, he knows he does not have an assist, so he cannot continue, has been pressured from mix. Damn, I'm not sure what's happening, it looks like Nancy was pressing buttons there. Oh my god. Uh, tries to catch Nancy, uh, punt, uh, what do you, what do you call it? Hitting uh, Android 17. Tried to go for the Android 17 counter, I'm saying uh, a lot. Here we go, oh, that was a disgusting mix. Here we go, he has assist 2, so now I can continue. Alright, is 2 bars enough? Yeah, 2 bars should be enough, just 1-1. Eh, 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 and then number, number? Nice. That's what's in Nancy's Zamasu and GT Goku, which is a, it's a very strong show. Nancy finally getting a hit. Going for snap? No, 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 just, just wants corner pressure, ooh. Solid is Nancy, could not convert, called GT Goku, great dragon rush. I think Nancy should level 3 right here, for sure. Just not going level 3, just sets up. Alright, now, oh my god, that is, oh wow! What happened there? Looks like uh, Zero was trying to press a button and is going to have to pay the price, that is a dead Bardock. Android 17 coming in, losing, coming in, losing a bit, a little bit of help. Alright, alright. Oh, tried to go for the uh, the dragon rush mix, cross-up dragon rush mix right there. With the GT Goku assist, alright, getting a little bit of staggers, Zero was not ready for the dragon rush, did not tech out, gets hit. I, I feel level 3 should be coming, no, sets up, wants to save the meter for some reason. Does not opt for the level 3. Alright, be careful, this mix can be dirty, oh! Empty jump, and just uh, just, just kind of waited out the reflect there. It's gonna be big damage, did not convert, throws, oh, what's happening here? Interesting, maybe tried to catch uh, Zero pressing buttons maybe? Not sure what's happening there. Oh, catches, or yeah, gets the overhead on Nancy. And now Nancy responds in overhead on Zero's Android 17, and that should be a dead Android 17, just keep it simple, level 1, yep. And you got that extra damage because you got that level, he's, he's got that Super Saiyan 3 Kamiomi how going on. Alright, now Zero's left with sparking, guard cancels out, sparking Nappa. This is still very possible. Zero's Nappa is very strong, gets hit with the dragons, did not tech, and this is gonna hurt. Definitely is gonna go for Spirit Bomboki. Yeah, vanish? Bang, bang, spirit bomb, here we go, full aura mix, full aura mix. What is the oki gonna be? Oh my god, Zero just 2H-ing out of there. This is very scary, good reflection from Nancy, and that should be dead actually, yeah, just keep it simple. Keep it simple. Yep, yep. Wow! Nancy winning 2 games straight. What is happening? Has Nancy adapted? 4 to 8, Zero still up 4 games, so it's gonna be a long road for Nancy. And Zero going for the raw tag. It catches, remember the pressing button. Alright, no conversion with the assist, just goes for barrier. Ooh, caught by the 6M, this is gonna be uh... What, SKD? Oh, opts to get GT Goku in actually, oh, bionic arm? Nope. Yeah, Zero tried to go for the bionic arm. Uh, and Nancy just did not fall for it, just blocked it and punished. Ooh, Nancy messing up with the conversion, did not, did not actually uh, continue the combo super dash after that. Alright, good reflex, dang! What is happening right now? Nancy? I think Nancy has adapted, now Zero's gonna have to adapt back towards Nancy, Nancy with the uh, awesome swag combos and Janemba. Of course, Zero is gonna have to uh, play this very patiently, gonna figure out what is Nancy's new game plan now? And what is Zero, what is Zero gonna have to respond, uh, respond with? I think Zero should uh, maybe, yeah, yeah, yeah. Damn, yeah, Zero's just gonna have to block, gets hit with the low, maybe he thought she was gonna go for the 6M. It'll be the combo extension there, and most likely we're gonna get a 1-3. 1... 1... and maybe 1-1-3 maybe? Actually, it's 1-1-1. Uh... yes, okay, I, I wasn't sure if that was gonna kill, but it did. Alright, here we go. It's gonna be harsh, it's gonna be uh, 4 bars, sparking, Nappa. But Zero can do this, his Nappa is uh, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty good, Nappa's pretty good. Ooh, gets, gets covered with GT Goku, says no conversion from Nancy, ooh. Sparking's out, does not feel safe there. Oh, Nancy sparking's in response, what is Zero gonna do right here? Good ref, wow! Wow, good reflex from Nancy. Zero's gonna have to figure out a different game plan right here. It's like uh, oh, good 2H, huge, this is huge, I think his level 3 can actually um, uh... Oh, oh, just snap, snapping GT Goku, wants to kill GT Goku. Nancy aware that there was a hole in that snap, oh, Nancy, or uh, sorry, Zero still gets the hit. I don't think he's gonna heal, but he should go for a level 3 mix, yep? Keep it simple, oh, now it's gonna kill. Alright, yeah, wow! Keep Zero optimizing, gets the GT Goku down. And now it's a 2v1 situation, Zero with 1 bar, Nancy sitting at almost 7 bars, it's huge. What is Zero gonna do? Oh, that, no conversion from Nancy, goes to dragon rush, guard cancels on Zero. Oh, very, oh my god, that was a scary vanish, highly punishable, good reflex from Zero. What is it gonna be? What, okay, Zero getting the hit, that should be dead, just 1 bar needed. What, okay, Zero getting the hit, that should be dead, just one bar needed, actually, no bar needed. Wow. Is Zero gonna make this full comeback? Oh, we got some lag going on, oh, oh, little bit of lag going on. Alright, Zero trying to get these 2H's on. Oh, blocked the two, uh, sorry, the, the, the two, the air two M. Alright, Zero getting the first hit, Nancy, guard cancelling out, does not feel safe, tried to catch him with the Denma auto combo. All Nancy has to do is block this, good blocks, oh my god, wow, that's gonna be a lot of damage, that is dead. Has, like Nancy, coming with a full adaptation. Zero's gonna have to find a different game plan for, for these uh, next couple matches. If he wants to win, if he wants to, to win, and get another uh, a match, or yeah, wants to win another round. Nancy just, Nancy very dominant, Zero not taking out. Yeah, looks like Nancy's bringing this back right now. Ooh, Zero uh, thought Nancy's uh, blocking was done, but got caught with a 5H. Now that, Dino 17, ooh, caught him with the uh, the command grab, good reflect out. Catches Denma with the Balaic auto combo, side switch, yep, gets the corner pressure. Okay, yep, good block from Nancy, ooh, hit with the six M. And that is not dead. He's gonna have to go for pressure once again, oh my god, oh wow. Not sure what's happening, and maybe Zero got hit, then saw a block, tried to punish, something like that, and then got hit cuz he pushed the button maybe? Um, yeah, Nancy's going for the straight raw tag in the beginning of the round, oh my god, that was scary. And what is Zero gonna do? Okay, no conversion, good reflection from Zero, uh, vanishes out, wants the corner pressure, could've converted off that, was not aware of the Matsu uh, coming in. Alright, well, I'm, what's gonna happen, level, oh no, no, just going for mix. Just wants to get that charge in with Android 17, alright, catches Nancy, do, pressing button or something like that. What's gonna happen right here? Hey, SKD? Alright. Oh wow. Nancy's out, oh my god. Wow, Zero tried to uh, catch Nancy with an overhead I'm assuming, but Nancy was just ready with that 2H. Now Zero with the corner pressure, catches uh, Nancy with the low, that should be a dead Matsu. Level one, yep, now things are looking real, thi, this might be a momentum shift for Zero. Zero does have more health than Nancy I think, but he doesn't have as much meter. Very scary, especially against playing against GT Goku. Zero, ready with the 2H, oh, was not ready that time, getting hit, conversion, alright, oh, did messed up on the conversion unfortunately, now Nancy gonna get punished for it. What is Zero gonna do? GT combo extension, goes for sliding knockdown, oh, Nancy was not ready for the other side, and is not ready for the cross up. Now once again, what is the mix gonna be? Sets up the Cyberman, I, oh, just, yeah, Nancy not feeling safe, I am not sure about that sparking. Alright, hits the, hits Cyberman, alright, alright, here we go, gonna get a full combo going. He can actually kill off this, with the GT Goku because of spirit bomb. Just double up. Yep, 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 here we go. Spirit bomb, to get the dragon rush, get the dragon rush, yep, yep, here we go. Awesome combos, the one one. One, and then Janenba, yep, here we go. And that is why I hate this character. Alright, Zero with the solo Android 17, solo Android 17 is pretty hard, the neutral is not the greatest. So he's gonna have to play this very carefully, just sparkings right away, wants to get that uh, that, wants to get that meter or whatever it is, just does not feel safe. I don't think he's gonna kill, but he should level three. Oh wow, oh my god, Zero. He actually could've killed uh, with level three right there, I'm pretty sure, does not matter, he gets the Denma, and now, Zero with sparking in two bars, GT Goku's two bars. Still very possible for Zero. Okay, pressure, guard cancels out, wow, that was dangerous, highly punishable, vanishes, alright. Oh my god, Nancy catches Zero pressing buttons in the air, this, should just go for SKD here, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, level one just goes sparking time, yep. Oh my god. Okay, Zero's not gonna be able to kill right here, gets his sliding knockdown, he's getting pretty intense match going on right here, oh my god. Damn, Zero tried to, tried to play the neutral there, but Nancy was aware she could super dash through those uh, through those key blocks, so it's now it's six eight. Nancy's getting closer and closer on that scoreboard. What is Zero gonna be? You know what this means, you know what this means, I should go pee, oh my god, I'm gonna watch the screen, I'm gonna commentate. Alright, gotta go for the true damage guys, alright, looks like Zero, who actually uh, caught, went back to his old, sparking, wants to see them dead. Realized that that Denma is a problem for, for Zero, Zero does not wanna snap a GT Goku, GT Goku is not the problem on Nancy's team, the problem is Denma. If Denma is dead, then the problem might be gone, Zero's fully aware of that, great staggers, I'm not sure what Nancy was doing there, cuz Nancy was walking forward there. Alright, tries rebellion to your round start, Nappa catching me, ooh, I don't think Zero was ready for Nancy to be on that side, I was, definitely was not ready. Oh, I just did not see what going on on the screen right there. Alright, level three. Oh, tried to go for the tick throw, but messes up the tick throw. Oh my god, yo, Zero just, just getting in there, I, I think Nancy thought they were gonna go back to neutral, but Zero just went in. And now, now Zero responds to his level three, gets the corner pressure, and I think Nancy should, should definitely spark here, just spark here. Oh my god, yeah. I watched this, literally, it's too late, well, are you gonna deny your back, oh, okay, hey, uh, Blue, Blue Stasi, can you ban um, Tienenos? Hey, Blue Stasi, can you ban, can you ban Tienenos? Okay, it looks like Nancy is uh, left the GT Goku in sparking, alright, four bars, messes up the convergence, Zero looking very dominant once again with his old team. Yeah, Nancy gonna have to play this very carefully, just gonna wait this out, just keep on blocking, great blocks from Nancy, ooh. Not feel safe there, oh my god, that was, that's great. Okay, thank you, Blue Stasi. And sets up the oki, alright. Oh Nancy, oh my god, why did Nancy, haha, why did Nancy vanish there? Oh no. Alright, now, this is game point for Zero, Zero is at nine games one versus Nancy's six. Nancy's gonna have to adapt once again, alright. Two M, oh my god, great blocks from, great blocks from Zero, did not take the dragon, that was some great blocks from Zero. Damn, it looks like, it looks like Nancy is aware Zero's overreflecting, and is just dragon, and is just gonna open dragon rush, now this oki's actually fucked up. That oki right there is probably one of the best okis in the game, you can't do anything about it. Like, if uh, if, if um, if, if Janenba gets a 2H on you, like a 2H, like gets a 2H super dash, and gets that, that sliding knockdown, you're fucked. You're absolutely fucked, you do not wanna block that, that mix is so good. Alright, yeah, Zero, is Zero gonna snap? No, no, Zero wants to keep Janenba, and is aware that Janenba is the issue once again. Yeah, is he gonna get the hit on the, I think Zero's gonna set up the uh, yep, he's gonna set up that, the, the hellzone, or whatever you call it. Alright, alright, Nancy, guard cancels out. Alright, a lot of vanishing help happening right now, alright. Oh my god, this delays them in dragon rush with Zero, I would level three right here. Yeah, honestly, I would level one, level three actually. Yep, level one, level three in Janenba, yep. Yeah, wow, that mix is so good, it's so good. Nancy's just so good with that, I, I would not be ready, she times it so well. Alright, now Zero left with uh, left with solo Nappa sparking and pretty four bars now, but it's very doable, we've seen Zero's Nappa, Nappa, Zero's Nappa is very good. He almost did it before, or has he done, oh yeah, yeah, he did do it before. He did do it before, earlier in this, in this uh, first attempt set. Get hit, gets Nancy with the dragon rush, what I think Zero should do, or the goal for Zero is to at least kill one character without wasting sparking, he's still sitting on four bars right. So, oh, here we go, this is that character that's gonna die. He actually just gonna need one bar, i, if he conver, yep. That is important for Zero. Zero's got to keep his sparking until one character. Nancy's just gonna, gonna play, should play this very patiently, and he is, he's just waiting for Nancy's Denma to make assist, or assist, or mistakes. Both players are just playing very solid right now, both are playing very patiently, oh wow. Is he gonna level three right here? Oh, just level one, and level three, yep. Yeah, Nancy going for level three, he's gonna force the sparking out with all this damage. Just gonna take away that logo on the screen real quick, don't want that there during the online tournament. Oof, sparking, yeah, I agree, here's a conversion, yep, I would level three right here. Oh no, 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 oh my god, catches, I'm, I'm not sure what Nancy was doing there. I mean Nancy was not ready, yeah, level three. Yeah, 100% in this situation, Nancy should level three, Nancy should do 100% level three, get out of there, yeah. Oh my god, amazing patience from Zero. Now Zero has the life lead, and they both have sparking, one level three, one level two, but this is both. Oh my god. Level three? Yep. Yeah, what is Zero gonna do right? Zero still has the sparking, it's very scary. Alright, a lot of, oh my god, is that dead? Is that dead with the scaling? No, it isn't, what is, what is this, no, my god, Nancy just wasn't, just couldn't block it, and there you go. Like Zero is the winner of that first attempt. Those are some good matches guys, some really good matches, wow, 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 we had, we had Zero get with a dominant force, and Nancy, Nancy adapting, making the comeback, Zero, you know, switching his team because Nancy was dominant for so long, and then, Zero went back to his old team with like, these are, this is my bread and butter, and he ended up winning the set. Good matches guys, good matches.